Please rise.
My diligence to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, trustee Peck, trustee Rassich.
Here.
Trustee Wajowski.
Here.
Trustee Bonucci.
Here.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee O'Rourke.
Here.
Mayor Collins. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to appoint trustee Rassich as this evening's chair.
I move the way point, trustee Rassich as evening's chair.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries presidential comments?
Mayor Collins did not leave any specific comments in the presidential level, but in that I'm acting in his position, I have a couple of comments that I would like to make. First off, you know, oftentimes citizenry asks trustees, and I know everybody on this board has been questioned at one time or the other, in regard to particular things that are occurring in the community. And I know Margie has happened, you know, people will stop you on the street, they'll talk to you, they'll approach you. I know Mr. O'Rourke recently spoke of something. Everyone in this room, on this board, I should say, has had contact with our citizens. And oftentimes, they want an answer right away. You know, I'm going to give a few illustrations of what, in the last two weeks, people have approached me and perhaps approached other members of this board. One individual wanted us, he wanted us, and he was reaching out, he said he would like a quiet zone on the rails, Drowdon Road, et cetera, all the way up, which is a very reasonable request. And I said, well, I can't grant that particular, I can't grant that I could stop that noise, but we as a board can, in the future, discuss it. Another individual spoke to me about a undesirable business, according to this particular residential area, on Route 59, and they said that this type of business is not amicable to our homes and lives. It's very important to that person, it's important to that community, and we have to, in my estimation, listen. Another individual sent me email in regard to, he sent the Romeoville Building Inspection Form. He said Romeoville has a rental inspection of their buildings, and he said, why don't we do that? And we've had individuals approach our board in regard to that type of thing. And a very last thing was, someone recently contacted me, and I met with some individuals about, they were concerned about a Plainfield Historic Division being formed in downtown Plainfield, another area. They were very concerned, had, they had confusion about what the entitlement was, et cetera, et cetera. I tried to stem some of it, but I said, you know what, we as a group will talk about it, and we as a group will reach out to anyone who presents a problem for us to solve, not present us with a problem, but for us to solve or at least give an opinion. And I think it's really valuable, and I know all of our trustees have had this occur in the past, and I say we should continue to reach out. We may not give an answer immediately because I have a quotation, and I think some of you have heard it maybe thirty or forty times, "Decisions made in haste, you live with in leisure." We as a board have to act with sensibility and perseverance and reasonableness, not simply bend to pressure. So if you have a concern, public, bring it to one of the trustees or bring it to our administration. We're more than willing to answer some of the questions. Okay, thank you. You know what, I'd like to make one last comment, and I'm going to open this up to our trustees. This past weekend, on Saturday, the Board of Trustees and our administration established, we had a strategic planning session for five hours on Saturday morning, from eight till roughly one o'clock. It was a review of our strategic plan. We had all of our department people, the majority of our trustees were there, and what I would like to do is open this up for a couple of minutes to get trustee comments on their reaction to our strategic plan, and then perhaps Administrator Murphy, who was very instrumental in organizing everything, will give a summary. So if any trustee would like to comment on the strategic meeting of this past weekend, please share your views. Thank you.
I enjoyed the strategic planning meeting we were at. I was at the one, it was approximately, what, five years ago, when we had the, three years ago, at Plainfield North High School, and it was, it was interesting to see how far the village has progressed. It was, it was a five-year plan at that time, I think they were trying to institute, and now it's, a lot of the projects are almost done, if not completed. And it's exciting for me to see all the new development going up around the village, along Route 59 and Route 30, the construction being completed there in the near future. So I'm rather excited about the future of the village.
I too enjoyed it very much. Working with the team and working with the way that Lou, the person who led the discussion for us, manages it, is so interesting because you wind up having great conversation, and it's just, it just works out very well. One of the things that we were very happy to talk about are different projects, is, as trustee Wajowski said, that are complete or near completed, but in how much they're in line with what we hear from the residents that they're looking for. And I think that's one of the best things to come out of that, is a lot of the ideas and projects that the staff's been working on, that the board has supported, have been projects that are important to the citizens, and as trustee Rassich had just spoken of, people would come up to you and say, you know, what about this sidewalk here, what about this bike path there, what are you going to do about, and you can finish that sentence with just about anything. But a lot of it was included in our, in our planning, to either be done, or it is done or partially done. So it was, it was a great morning.
Just quick comment on your phrase, is your quote, only thirty-two times, I think.
Oh, okay.
It's only been here ten years, so I'm sure it's been done a little bit more. No, but anyway, on the strategic planning, I thought it was excellent. I particularly liked the interaction between the staff and the board. I think Lou Benner did an excellent job of interchanging those, get everybody to participate, which is no mean feat, by the way. I mean, it doesn't happen automatically, it takes some practice to do that. I think the, I think Brian talked about the fact, we accomplished a five-year plan mostly in three years, and we need to see what we're going to do next. So a lot of success, a lot, made things happen. One of the things that excites me about going forward is, we talked a little bit about looking at trends. I'll touch on this when we get to the audit again, too. We see details on a month-in, month-out basis, but we don't very often stand back and get a bigger picture of what's going on. And there are a number of trends, the demographics, he talked about that, there's the eBooks and online shopping and all that, the impact that will have on the village. I think we need to stand back and address it, say, okay, what's, how's this going to impact us, what do we do about it? I'd love to see us make that part of our strategic plan going forward.
Strategic planning, the meeting I thought was very productive, while it was five hours, as you indicated, it was quite long, but it really was productive, I thought. And it got me a chance to, you know, listen to other trustees' comments, to see where we've been, kind of where we're going, different types of personalities, so I thought it was very favorable. I guess just for the people that are here and the people that are listening, it is still in process, I guess you'd say, so it was really just more discussion. And the other point that I took away from it is that, like any plan, it's open, so it's fluid, it's open to change, and I think that's kind of the next step for us, is that we're looking, okay, what pieces are there that haven't been completed, that should continue to be worked towards completion, and new items, maybe that would fill in where some have dropped off. So I think, as my fellow trustees found out during that meeting, as far as personality, for me, the devil's in the details.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. Yeah, actually, first off, let me just say thank you to the residents that came out to our strategic planning effort back almost three years ago, and the input that they provided, actually, it provided a fantastic foundation for the entire board, and the exercises that we've gone through. As we've, as we've, you'll hear soon in our audit report, where we were then versus where we are now is, is a very different world, and, and there's been a lot of heavy lifting done. And I do want to thank the past boards and the current board that have actually taken the ball and run with it, and, and actually made some rather impressive changes within the community, in keeping with the vision of that strategic planning effort that was first kicked off, like I said, just a little under three years ago. In that amount of time, there's, there has been a, quite a lot of change. Boy, something just rang, like I'm talking too long. All right, I'll be quiet then. Maybe it's just in my head that I should stop talking. No, but all joking aside, we, we did have a great session, an update on that session, and an update on what we've accomplished, has been posted on our website, or at least it will be posted by tomorrow, I think it was posted today. So all that information is on our website. But as well, we had a conversation at the strategic planning session on Saturday, that we very well likely are in a place where we should probably get the community back together, and check in to see where we're at, what we've accomplished, and where we should probably look at going forward in the, in the future, in the future. We're looking at probably an April-May-ish period, that we'd like to consider having that in the community, so there will be some more information on that coming out later on. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle?
Oh, no, I meant, you just allowed us to talk about one thing.
Trustees' comments?
Oh, you have other comments?
Finally.
Well, you know, there is, go ahead.
Okay. The other thing, a couple of things occurred this weekend. One was the How-To Fair, which the village participated in. I didn't get a chance to see that, but the other thing, we were all invited, the board was invited to, the Fire Protection Open House from twelve to three, at the fire house near my house, anyway. Well, the important thing that occurred there was their test of the sprinkling system. They showed, had two rooms set up identically, they lit them both off. The one that didn't have the sprinklers, you know, after three minutes, got flashover, kind of burned the place up. One of the sprinklers, you know, started out, and within thirty seconds, the fire had been dampened down to the point where it wasn't a hazard. So it shows that sprinklers can indeed be effective. What I'd like to see happen, though, there's been a fair amount of discussion around whether we ought to have sprinklers, whether we ought to mandate them for businesses of certain sizes and residents and all that. I think I'd like to see an educational campaign that shows the impact of them, and then let people decide if they want to do that, make it an option for them, recognizing the cost for a house, maybe like fifteen thousand dollars, but it does improve the safety. And if people opt to do that, I think, great. If people say, no, I'm going to go with a sprinkler, or the fire alarm, so on, that's okay, too. That's an individual risk decision. But I'd like to see it made available. I'd be reluctant to see us mandate that it happened, but it's certainly an impressive demonstration, certainly warrants more people understanding the impact that it can have. So, for what it's worth, I'd recommend we make it available, find a way to do that a little bit more readily than right now, but I'm not a keen fan of mandating it for everybody.
I, I would agree with that comment. I think the fire department might, and probably more than willing, maybe to come in and maybe just give a presentation on it, or something, if they were open to that fact. But I agree, I think, you know, choice is always a positive thing. If homeowners or builders have the option, and they, they don't, maybe they need a little bit more information, that's a positive thing.
I'm in agreement with, with both of you, and I want to say a special thanks to the Fire and Police Department today with their work on past oral at the house fire.
Are there any other trustee comments? Now, this will be the time for public comments. There are no public comments, and we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on September twenty-first, and bills paid and bills payable reports for October fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A and B under the consent agenda. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2014-2015 Audit Presentation.
Thank you very much. Before I turn this over to Tracy Plekum and our dear reps from, oh, just, just one rep this year, from Sickich, to share the story of our audit, let me just, again, quickly point out that this is by far the most important document we create on an annual basis. This speaks to how we set out to do the goals that you asked us to do, and how we accomplish them, and whether we met the, met them within the confines of how our budget was set up and, and the like. And, and I think you're going to be pretty pleased with the results from this particular year. I especially want to thank the department heads for their work this past year, and especially with Tracy Plekum and her group in helping the auditors get the documents they needed so that they could complete this audit. So with that, Tracy?
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Jim Savio, who represents Sickich, who is the partner in our audit and oversaw the audit process. I'll let him do a presentation, and then we can answer any questions that you might have.
...for the GFOA for the first time last year, for fiscal year 2014, and that certificate is in the introductory section of the comprehensive annual financial report. I also like to start off, too, by thanking Brian, Tracy, Colleen, and the entire staff of the village for all of their assistance during the entire audit process. Went smoothly again this year. They were able to answer all of our questions and provide us with all the documents that we had requested. I'd like to go through a few, just a few of the highlights of the comprehensive annual financial report, as well as the auditor's communication to the board of trustees, and answer any questions that you might have. I'd like to start on page one of the comprehensive annual financial report, and that's right after the financial section tab. This is the independent auditor's report, and this is the only, only three pages that we as auditors are responsible for. Management is responsible for the rest of the comprehensive annual financial report. And those responsibilities are listed out here on page one, and then the very top of page two. Turning to page two, up at the top is the opinion paragraph. We issued, again, this year, an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide to the village. And then right below that, we had a change in accounting principle. We adopted a new auditing standard, GASB statement number sixty-seven, financial reporting for pension plans, and that modified some of the note disclosures and the required supplementary information this year. Turning over two more pages to MDNA one, page MDNA one. This is management's discussion and analysis. This was prepared by Tracy, and it provides a great overview of the village's financial position and changes in financial position. Also would explain any significant changes that might have occurred during the year. And one other thing it also does display that you can't find elsewhere in the report is comparative data, so data with, compared to fiscal year 2014. That's also very useful information. I always, it's sounding a broken record, but I always say, if you only want to read one thing in this hundred-and-thirty-nine-page document, read the MDNA, because it provides a good overview of the village's finances for the year. Turning to page, page eight and nine, this is the balance sheet for your governmental funds. So these would be all your funds, except for the water and sewer fund and the fiduciary fund, the police pension fund. Just want to point out, on page nine, down at the bottom, your fund balance, or would be retained earnings in a full-profit corporation. The general fund is listed in the first column there. Want to point out, the unassigned fund balance was about eight-point-three million dollars. That's about forty percent of your current year expenditures, or about a five-month reserve, which is in accordance with the village's fund balance policy, which is in footnote one J on page twenty-five. Turning up, page over to page eleven, this is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds, or your income statement. First column, general fund, about halfway down the page, your excess of revenues over expenditures before any transfers in and out, increase of about one-point-eight million dollars. So a good year, again, for the general fund. I think last year, the income was about two million dollars before transfers. And you'll see right below that, right below there, transfer out, three-point-two million of that transfer was a transfer of excess funds to the capital projects fund. And then also mentioning the capital projects, which is the second column, right next to the general fund. You'll see the fund balance of about five-point-five million dollars. That's assigned for capital projects. And then turning to page fifteen, this is the income statement for your water and sewer fund. You'll see about halfway down, operating income, which is operating revenues, less operating expenses. Loss of about a million dollars, mostly due to depreciation. Depreciation is about three million dollars, so you're funding about two-thirds of your depreciation, which is a non-cash transaction. And then income before transfers, about one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars. And then turning to page nineteen, is the income statement for your police pension fund. About halfway down, you'll see net investment income, which is your investment income, both interest and then net appreciation, depreciation in the investments themselves, less investment expense, about one-point-five million dollars, which is about six-point-six-four percent money-weighted rate of return. So a pretty good year for the pension fund. Turning to page twenty-seven, we're in the footnotes to the financial statements. I just want to point out, on page twenty-seven, footnote two A, the last paragraph, custodial credit risk is the risk that if a bank were to fail, would you be able, would you be able to recover your deposits? I just want to point out that all of the village's deposits were covered either by FPIC insurance, or they were collateralized by the bank, where the deposits are held. So no exposure to custodial credit risk. And then page thirty-seven, we're still in the footnotes. Just want to point out, footnote six F, lists out your two refundings, and you'll see you had a cash flow savings on the first refunding of about four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, then an economic gain of about three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars. And then the second refunding for the water and sewer revenue bonds, cash flow savings of about one-point-two million dollars, and an economic gain of about nine-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. So significant savings for the village. And turning to page fifty-six, we are into what we call required supplementary information. The next two schedules show your funding progress for your two pension funds, your Illinois District Retirement Fund, and then the police pension fund. Illinois District Retirement is on page fifty-six, and you can see the funded ratio, which is the fourth column over, is about seventy-nine percent. So that's the assets divided by the actual accrued liability. Pretty consistent with the prior year. What IMRF does, though, is they smooth out gains and losses over a five-year period. If you were to take the actual market value of the investments at December thirty-first, 2014, which is IMRF planning, the funded ratio is actually eighty-nine-point-three-six percent, and the unfunded balance is about one-point-six million dollars. And retirees are not included in these amounts, retirees are funded at one-hundred percent. And turning over to the next page, page fifty-seven, shows the same information for the police pension fund. The funding is about seventy-five percent, which has been pretty consistent for about the last five years. That is all I had in the comprehensive annual financial report. Want to point out a few things on the auditor's communication to the board of trustees. If you turn over to the table of contents, you'll see there's some required communication that we have to have with the board of trustees. Then after that are listed, adjusting journal entries, which are entries that we found as part of the audit process. You can see that, right after that, there's only three audit adjustments that we found, none of them material. And then we had one past adjustment. This is an adjustment that's deemed to be immaterial, so we didn't actually record it on a general ledger. So that's posted to our past adjustment schedule. And then finally, the communication of deficiencies and internal control and other comments starts on page seven. I just want to point out, we found no material weaknesses this year, no significant deficiencies, and only two current year comments, that we call just deficiencies. And those are listed out on page ten. And then finally, on page thirteen, is the status of comments that we had in the prior year. You'll notice there was only one deficiency, and you'll see management's response and the status, status of those, that comment. You can see that that's in the process of being corrected. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Question, which, on page eleven of the, going to the board, talk of all these G A S B things that are coming along. The verbiage that we see is rather complex. Does anybody really understand all this stuff? Or how easy is the implement?
Very few people. Probably nobody, because not an accountant would understand.
Are there any issues coming up that, from all this, these various government mandates, if you will, to change the rules?
GASB sixty-eight is the big one. That'll be for next year, and that's going to, we were talking about that unfunded liability on pages fifty-six and fifty-seven for IMRF and the police pension. Sixty-eight's going to require that, not those exact numbers, but a number similar to that will have to be booked, not in the village's general fund or any of their governmental funds, but at the government-wide level. So the government-wide financial statements, and then also in your proprietary statements, so the water and sewer fund, if you allocate out a portion of that IMRF liability to that fund. So that's, that's really the big one that's coming on the pipeline. That'll be for next year. GASB sixty-seven was for the plant, so there's information, your footnotes in RSI, that are similar to what you're going to have for sixty-eight. We just didn't book it on the actual financial statements this year. We'll do that next year. And then seventy-four and seventy-five, GASB seventy-four and seventy-five, those will be implemented in FY eighteen and FY nineteen. It's going to do something similar for the other post-employment benefit obligations, or basically retiree health. So any liability for retiree health, that will be booked similar to how we're going to do it for sixty-seven and sixty-eight.
Enough is going to have a dramatic impact on us, so. It's more a matter of documenting what is required, I assume?
Yeah, it'll, it'll affect your unrestricted net position at the government-wide level, and then potentially your water and sewer fund, too. So it will have an effect. The numbers have always been out there, though, so the rating agencies, everyone knows what those numbers are, so it's not going to be a huge surprise to anybody when they're booked. But it will affect your unrestricted net position, it will lower that. You won't have a deficit like a lot of other municipalities are going to have, like State of Illinois, or a few others. You'll still have a positive, unless the market crashes in the next hour, many months, six months.
It's going to be pretty difficult to try on, but I hope it stops. Question for Tracy, or maybe for you as well, but I noticed the bond ratings, or bond rates, the I E P A one is one and a quarter percent, which we knew about. the I E P A one is one and a quarter percent, which we knew about. Everything else shows between two and four percent and one, two to three and a half percent. Do we have an average on the rest of those? And we've been refinancing some. What is our average on all those obligations other than the Illinois one?
Our average is probably running right around that 3%. We have some slightly higher rates, and those are ones that can't be refunded currently because they're newer in nature. Once they're callable, we will look at that and look for cost savings relating to those interest rates. But when we're refunding right now, we're looking in the twos, into 3% range. So a lot of our debt has been refunded within the last 10 years. So we're seeing, it was over $3 million, I think, in cost savings in the last few issues that we've had, so.
But we have nothing that's more than 4% at the moment, though.
We have very few maturities that are that high, but there are some that are out there that we'll have to bring down as we look to refund them. Just nothing, yeah, nothing major.
The other thing which we've talked about in the past is depreciation on the, the water side. We're not covering that, we're not recovering the water depreciation yet. It was $3 million, and now we're down to $1 million. So obviously we're proving our situation there, but, but sewer has an excess. And if you lump the two together, which we tend to do, you end up with a slight positive situation, if I read this properly, is that correct?
Yeah, and the one thing it doesn't show, and it reflects it after that loss, is we're supplementing some of our revenues with the home roll sales tax. So you can see in that income, at the lower portion, you'll see the net, the loss in the income statement, and then they'll say other revenue sources right below that statement and that, in the page that Jim had pointed out. So a portion of some of that loss is being recovered through the home roll sales tax. It's offsetting some of the rates that we're charging to the residents right now.
Yeah, I think it was about break even, I think. I think it was 74 about.
Correct.
I'll defer to some of the comments, I'll just sum it up later, let somebody else talk.
Go right back to you.
Well, and if the board gets the opportunity, the statistical section is, is something that's newer. It's part of the CAFR that we've done the last couple of years. We've had it in maybe three years, a lot of this information. But it gives a 10 year look back to a lot of the stats that are within the audit. It's nice to see, it does give some historical information and trends in certain areas. So if you do have an opportunity to look at it, it does give some good data. It also gives some good demographical, demographic data in relation to some of the employers in town and things of that nature. So I'd highly recommend, if you have an opportunity, you should read the whole audit. But if you don't, the statistical section is pretty interesting as well.
I did scan through the whole thing, that's reason for, I totally agree with it. It's a tremendous document. I can see, I'd be extremely surprised if we didn't win whatever award we won this year for last year's, this exceptionally, exceptionally good, very informative. As I was said, kind of alluded to it earlier, we see this information on a piecemeal basis every month. We rarely have a chance to see it all lumped together until you get to the audit. And I've been saying for a long time that the village has made tremendous progress, indeed we have, but here it's documented, there's no question about it. You've checked all the numbers and it's outstanding. I kind of allude to, going back to my college days, which are probably back in, I don't know, 1500s or something, Jim, or whatever. Anyway, you know, go through a course and you, you study and you learn things on a piecemeal basis. Then you get to the final exam, you got to kind of bring it all together. Well, this is the final exam for the village in a sense, because it pulls the, all the data together in one place, a tremendous reference document. Anything you want to know about what, how these starts were back in 2006, and what it declined to, number of employees that we had throughout the period of time. It shows the changes that we made to get to the position we are now. At one point, as I recall, we had a fund balance of negative $6 million, 2007 maybe, and we've dug ourselves out of the hole to the tune of a positive $19 million. That's a hell of an improvement. And it happens, and this document, how it happened is here. And I give the staff and Brian and the staff tremendous amount of credit for managing, pulling that off. That's really a very heavy workload to pull off and maintain the services of the village, which we've done a great job of doing. They're very responsive, and the water system works, sewers work, police do a great job, crime is coming down. I mean, yeah, it's a great place to live, but it takes a lot of effort to get us to that point. It's quiet, but really, really important what's happening.
Good job to you, Tracy and Brian and the whole staff. I think it's important to stress again that, as you said, there were no material weaknesses or deficiencies in the, in the audit, which I'm very happy to see that. Means the village is sound.
Just have a couple of questions or comments. I guess the deficit elimination, which I think is, is huge, and I don't think you guys have gotten enough credit for what you've accomplished. So I don't know if you want to take 30 seconds or two minutes and kind of explain maybe a little bit where we were and where we are today, because I think it tells a, a very positive story.
Well, that's, thanks. Actually, the, there was a lot of heavy lifting that was taken on by the directors and the board to be able to get to that, to get to this place. Little over six years ago, when the economy really dropped off, building permit revenues for the Village of Plainfield represented about 40% of our revenue. And we spent it as though it were part of our regular operating budget, and it, and it would be there to continue for us. So when the economy stopped, we found ourselves going from seeing 40% to maybe 1%, maybe 2%. So that took us into a negative position there in of itself. To make matters even more challenging for us, we were sitting on a $12 million negative position in our capital fund. Water and sewer fund was one and a half million in the hole, and the corporate account was $4.5 million, a negative position, 4.3, sorry. And yes, I know I'm a little savantish when it comes to these numbers, but when you were hired in on those numbers, they kind of stick in your mind for a bit. So it was, there was a lot of heavy lifting that had to take place. Sadly, we had what we called dark Thursday here, and we laid off a large number of our employees. Our first step was to have to make cuts, just to be able to stem whatever bleeding we had. And then from there, begin to make those very hard decisions on where we needed to put our priorities. The rating agencies actually helped us make some of those tough decisions as it related to making sure we got rid of that deficit position in the capital account. And the board made some very, well, difficult decisions with regard to what our water and sewer rate should be, what our sales tax revenues rate should be, and what our property tax revenue rate should be. But the, the board was very good at seeing that, that these were the tough decisions we needed to make in order to continue to provide the level of services that our residents expect of us. And I'm very thankful for the lifting by the board and the lifting by the staff to get us to, to that particular place. And it didn't happen overnight. It took a lot of work and a lot of moments to ponder what this really meant, but it came together, so. It wasn't just, it wasn't just us, it was everybody.
The other piece, and I'm not an accountant, so I will, just kind of from a layman's perspective. So obviously, the revenue side and the balance is very good. I guess the other thing that people will ask or be curious about is always the debt side of it then. So I know there's some debt mentioned in the report. Can you take just, again, 30 seconds, two minutes to kind of explain the logic behind the reasons for the debt, maybe? Is that possible? Without getting into too much detail?
Well, each project kind of had its own need at various different times. We haven't issued any new debt in, in over seven years. We, we, yeah, we've refinanced some debt, but since 2007, we haven't issued any new debt. That last debt that was issued was a $15 million note, and that in large part was to pay for the, some property acquisition that the board had undertaken before that, and as well for the improvements that were made in the downtown area. So that was the, and there were other parts to it. There were some, also some road capital funds that were tied into that. Some of the other debt loads that we've had largely have to do with expansion of utilities and the like. Our water and sewer fund, for example, we, we issued debt for both the, the expansion of the water plant and also for the sewer plant. At the time, it, it made absolutely perfect sense that we should build out to where we were because of the extent of the growth that was going on within our community. We had, with the stall, there, we're now in a position, we, we use it as a marketing position more than anything now, that we have capacity to serve a 70,000 residents within our water and sewer fund. And so when the growth comes, or when Diagio asks for more capacity, we are more than happy to tell them that it's available for them. There are some communities that don't have that, so we, we do turn that to a positive. That being said, that was one of those difficult decisions that the board had to make in setting the plans for putting on that capital charge that we did on the water and sewer fund that people see on their water bills that was very unpopular. But in large part, it gave us a guaranteed revenue that goes right against paying off that, that bond issue.
I guess I would ask the auditor, from, from your perspective, overall, what you've seen, you know, the revenues and the balances versus the debt, is there any comment you want to make about how the debt relates to that versus what you've seen in other towns or other communities?
Probably reiterate what Brian said. I mean, it's, obviously everything's been trending positively since the recession. And deficit in the capital projects, I think was more like $11 million. It was, it was huge. So having that eliminated last year, and now you've got a surplus of about $5.5 million. I mean, everything is trending in the, in the right direction. And your debt load is, like Brian said, you haven't had new debt in eight years. So that, that's pretty unheard of. That's pretty rare.
That's what I thought when I heard that same statement. So I was just curious for your take. Thank you.
No.
Okay. You know, one comment, Mr. Savio, and board members, and staff, and anyone in attendance, the one thing that I, I always marvel at is the fact that when we look at, when Sikic does the report, the report in my estimation is really done well. And that's not to be solicitous of you or anything else, other than the fact, I know when it's finished, you lead, you know, you read the final page and it says, you are doing a good job. There's one thing that frightens me continually as an elected official is, and I've brought it up a number of times at our meetings and everything else, when, what really frightens me when you have internal fraud, for example, Dixon, Illinois, where I'm going to, her name, she was convicted, Rita Crudwell, stole $64 million and no one saw it happening, it's outrageous. But you know what? When I think about what we receive and what we have received, and the work that's done by not only our staff, but also by your company in conjunction with our people, I feel very confident that the financial situation in the Village of Plainfield is in very good hands. Like I say, not only do you issue a report that's very honest and very sincere, and in the past you have given, you know, a few situations where you say, we need improvement, but you also applaud the good work done by these people. And it's, like we always say, it's not only Brian and Tracy, but it's the entire staff. Everybody cooperates to produce a good. And like I say, thank you for your good work, and I'd like to thank everybody for their good work. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other comments or questions? Not. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to accept the Village of Plainfield Audit and Management Letter for the 2014-2015 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Trustee Pinucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Spiker Annexation. We're seeking a motion to open, to open a public hearing regarding an annexation agreement and annexation of property located at 22544 West 143rd Street.
I move we open the public hearing on the particular property at 22544 West 143rd Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries.
Yes, thank you. You have in your packet a summary of our report. The applicant is coming before the village board this evening and seeking an annexation of approximately 15 acres. This property, just because of context, is located on East 143rd Street, commonly known as Taylor Road or Spiker Road. It's actually south of the reserve or south of Route 126, adjacent to I-55, or just a little bit west of I-55. The property for many, many years was at one point used for a auto scrapyard. The applicant has cleaned the site up. Currently, as we speak, the property is currently being used for storage of a little more than 100 mini buses and some limited warehousing. The applicant's property is contiguous to the Village of Plainfield to the north as part of the reserve project, which is a subdivision to reserve. The applicant is seeking the annexation of 15 acres into the Village of Plainfield. They are requesting to rezone that property to I-2, which is our general industrial zoning. The property is currently, again, in Will County, is currently zoned I-2 in Will County, and also I-R3. A portion of the property, which is a flood plain to the north, is currently zoned R3. The applicant, again, is seeking all 15 acres to be zoned I-2 in accordance with our zoning ordinance. You have in your packet a proposed annexation agreement, in Exhibit C. Staff has provided a summary. Generally, based on our discussions with Mr. Martin and counsel for Mr. Spiker, staff is in general agreement with the proposed provisions of that annexation agreement. Specifically, the applicant has modified the agreement to cap out the number of mini buses that could be stored in this property, and also the number of semi trucks. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Mr. Martin, the attorney for Mr. Spiker is here this evening to answer any questions the board may have.
Question, Parcel 1 is now I-2, Parcel 2 is R3 or something in Will County? And we're trying to put them together all as I-2?
That's correct. We're consolidating all in one zoning classification. The property is currently zoned, it's actually part of the reserve. It's northern perimeter of the property, it's mostly flood plain, which is kind of a leftover from the reserve itself. So really, there was never really no logic for the R3 zoning. It really has no potential for residential development because it's flood plain. But the applicant is requesting that the whole property be zoned, all 15 acres be zoned I-2.
And they own both pieces of now?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Martin, I assume you wrote the five pages of Exhibit C?
Yes, sir.
The most complete Exhibit C I've ever seen.
Thank you.
Usually one or two pages.
The village has a couple more from some of my projects. Different with you.
But, very comprehensive, it's well described what's, what you want, so I think as the lost staff has some issues around it, I would certainly support.
Maybe you could put up the annexation plat, just to, because if you see, yeah, that's perfect, that's fine. The triangle part is the part that's R3, and we bought that in 1992. If you understand, the assessment plat's a large rectangle, and the farmer who had the reserve property, the assessment plat came over this area, and that's the 2.64 acres. And that's, that's already annexed to the Village of Plainfield and was zoned R3. But it's surrounded by our property and the other trucking businesses, and it's basically vacant land, and everything that surrounds it is already I-2 County. And what we're seeking to annex is the property that's at the bottom there, that's about 12.1 acres, which is already zoned I-2. And Mr. Spiker's here, he, he's been on the property for more than 50 years, and he's had people encourage him to annex in the past. What we had was, we had a building, pole building about 40 by 70 feet that was destroyed by a tornado. And now he wants to rebuild it, so he has to either go to the county or come to the village. So he called me up and asked if he could come to the village, and we would prefer to come into the village. So that's what we're seeking to do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, as part of the plat of annexation, it shows that you guys own the south half of Taylor Road, is that correct?
Yeah, that, the surveyor took it over to the other side of Taylor Road, because the annexation statute takes it over and annexes the other side of the right of way.
Are you dedicating?
We are dedicating 50 feet from the center line onto our property, and then the annexation statute automatically annexes the other side of the roadway. It always, always goes over to the other side of the roadway. That's why the annexation plat is depicted in that fashion.
Just doesn't, the dedication doesn't show up on the plat, that's all? Is that a separate document?
No, it's in the agreement.
Okay.
It's in the agreement. In fact, that was one of Mr. Garrigan's requests. We changed paragraph seven to show that we would annex, you, you don't have it in your copy, I, I think, because I, I didn't get it to him till Friday. He asked me Wednesday to make the changes. But it's, we will annex 50 feet as measured from the center line. But it's, we will annex 50 feet as measured from the center line, or dedicate.
And is that why it's not on the plat, because it was a recent change?
It's a recent change, yeah.
Confident with that, Mike?
That's fine. Yes, we're fine with that.
He asked for three changes. One was to limit the number of trucks to 140, which is actually, that includes the 2.64 acres and the 12. I figure that's 10 an acre, so I figured that was a reasonable number. And to make that change about the dedication was one of the other changes, so we made that change, too.
And for the record, there are certain uses that are allowed in our B3 district, which would be prohibited, hazardous waste, an asphalt plant, adult uses, certain uses which we agreed to prohibit in accordance with the terms of the annexation agreement.
And we're prohibited from going back in the junk salvage yard business, but we have no intention of doing that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, so the agreement that we're being asked to vote on this evening, is that the current agreement, or has it been modified?
There's three provisions which are not reflected in the current language, and those are the modifications, which Mr. Martin just highlighted. He's agreed to limit the number of mini buses to 150, as per staff's request. He's agreed to limit the number of semi-trucks to 140, and there's a 50-foot dedication of Taylor Road. Those three modifications, I have a draft, but those changes were made after the actual agenda went out. So to find-
But if you don't mind, what we would be doing today is directing the village attorney to draft up the ordinances, and that would come back with those particular provisions in it when the board votes on it at the future, is that-
That's correct. The current, the most recent updated agreement that I have in my hands will come before you with the support to direct the village attorney to draft the ordinance for the annexation agreement.
Mr. Harvey, would you like to comment on it?
Yeah.
Would you like to comment on that, sir?
Sure, just echoing what Mr. Murphy and Mr. Garrigan have said. This is pretty close to the final draft, but you're not voting on this tonight. If the consensus is to go forward, as Mr. Murphy just said, to say, you know, we direct the attorney to prepare the ordinances, the final draft will come before you in a couple of weeks with those changes. And it's pretty common. You have to publish a proposed annexation agreement according to the Illinois Municipal Code, so, you know, we publish drafts, and most of the time, they're revised prior to us adopting them. So that's pretty common, but probably 98% of that annexation agreement is what's before you, and the changes were just articulated by Mr. Garrigan and Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
So that's sort of a thumbnail sketch of the process.
Has anybody from the Reserve contacted the village and argued against this at all?
No. There is no public comment during the public hearing for the annexation, for the rezoning and annexation at the Planting Commission. There is no public comment at all in this case.
Look at the aerial, too, where you can see, we've got a very heavy line of forestation between the creek and us, and, you know, we haven't had any complaints. Like I said, we've owned the property that was the Reserve overlap for more than, you know, since 1992, so it's not really something, there are park backs up to that area, but, and that's controlled by the Forest Reserve, or Park District, not the Reserve, so.
I just think it's important to note that there were no objections to the neighboring community.
Contractor is none.
You know, I think it's also important to realize, on the very first page of the report summary, it says, "Issues: Staff and Plant Commission recommended approval of the annexation rezoning at the September 15 meeting of the Plant Commission by a vote of six to nothing." Oftentimes, the Plant Commission, I know a number of individuals who are seated on this board right now, were on the Planning and Zoning Board at one time, and oftentimes, when we were on that board, we always say, "Did the trustees ever listen to us?" Well, this is another illustration, you should read, no, we should read the issues and see six to nothing. They did the groundwork, they did the basic, and we're following through, and so oftentimes, let's not overlook what was previously done. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, are there any public comments? Not, then we're seeking a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular business meeting.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Now we'd be seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to prepare the necessary ordinances for the annexation agreement, annexation, and rezoning. So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Administrators' report?
Done, thank you.
Management Services' report?
I have one item for consideration tonight. What you have in your packet is a proposal from Mr. David's Flooring for replacement of the Village Hall first floor west-side carpeting. This carpet was looked at back in 2014. As you recall, the board underwent a renovation project back there for the east side of the first floor of this village hall. At that point, from, due to budget constraints, staff recommended that we delayed the replacement of the west-side carpet until a future budget year. So what you have in your packet is a proposal from the subcontractors that installed the flooring on the west side for $24,766. Their proposal, they've extended the same unit pricing as was in 2014. Staff is happy with the work that they've done on the east side and is recommending approval for the west-side replacement. It would remain consistent, the pattern would be the same, be easier for maintenance and replacement in the future as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question about, look at the details. There is a supply and install four-inch vinyl base. What do you need a vinyl base for, for a carpet?
It's actually the border at the bottom, the base at the bottom of the wall.
Border, oh, okay, that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. At least it clarifies what we're doing.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I just, I guess I just had a general question, excuse my ignorance, but is there any reason in a situation like this that we don't go out for other bids?
Sure, and I should have clarified that sooner. Back in 2014, this project, when we renovated the east side of the hall, was approved through a cooperative job order contract, which is run through the city of Naperville, and what they basically do is, it's like joint purchasing, they will get fixed pricing on construction-type projects, everything from nuts and bolts to paint and construction matters, and they keep what, for lack of a better term, is a catalog of pricing for each item. And what other municipalities can do is go to this, what they call the JOC program, get bid pricing for specific projects, such as when we built out the other, the other side of the village hall, and that is allowed through state statute. It's considered already a bid process because they've done the work ahead of time. It saves time and effort on staff's ends when they have the smaller projects and don't need to go through the RFQ/RFP process. It's already been handled through the city of Naperville through the JOC program. These prices were part of that 2014 process, and it's just been extended for this year.
I just know that sometimes we try to use, and I'm not sure where this contractor's from, but sometimes we try to use local businesses if well possible. That was the only reason for the question.
Yeah, this subcontractor's from Itasca, it's a commercial-grade carpet. It's challenging to find a number of providers locally that handle that as well, but also through the bid process that Naperville did, they were the approved bidder through their program.
Thank you.
I received a touch of criticism in regard to some of the expenditures on Village Hall from a couple people. They said, "What are you spending all that money? Redesigning, putting in new carpeting, et cetera, et cetera." There's an old saying, and the old saying is, "You only get one chance to make a first good impression." People come into this building by the hundreds. You know, they look at the floor, that's, you know, the carpeting is raised, you're tripping, our employ, well, I'm just saying, it could occur, but I'm also saying, our employees who work here, who spend a good deal, 40, a minimum 40 hours a week here, deserve a safe and clean environment, a healthy environment. This rug in this particular building, for anyone who is horribly critical, is 12 years old. It needs to be changed. Not only, it can't be cleaned, and it perhaps has certain pollutants in it from too much cleaning one way or another, but it's a good expenditure, and if anybody should complain about it, the expenditure, see Mr. Murphy.
Before you see Mr. Murphy, I do want to say, there isn't a made that it's causing a trip hazard. We actually are holding it down with duct tape. There are three different places where it's being held down by duct tape, and there is buckling, so it does, it does cause a trip hazard, and so it does need to be replaced.
I move that we approve the proposal for the carpeting replacement for Mr. David's Flooring International for the total amount not to exceed $24,766.
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
That's all I have.
Engineers' report?
No report.
Planning Department report?
No report.
Building Department report?
No report.
Public Works' report?
Good evening. Public Works has one item this evening that pertains to actually keeping carpets clean. The past contract expired on September 30th, and Dave Doty, our building maintenance crew leader, worked with several staff members over here at the hall to get pricing on a replacement contract. That contract, the contractor that we'd be recommending is Imperial Service Systems. They're slightly less than the previous contractor that was doing this work, and attached to the memo is the details, supporting the company, references, the scope of work of all cleaning activities in the different parts of the village hall that they'd be performing, and with that, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You said it comes in less than the previous contract?
A little bit less than the previous contract, but the scope that's been updated included some of the tasks of work that weren't previously included in the contract, like shampooing carpets twice a year, that was an extra. This contract includes it in the monthly fee, so there won't be an extra cost to come in and shampoo the new carpet.
And based on the stuff we got, it's the first time I've ever seen that kind of detail from a janitorial service, and it sounds like they've been around for a bit and do a good job and are very proud of what they do. So it sounded like a good choice.
They received good remarks as well from, was it Westmont Police Department, where they currently provide services, so they do have municipal experience in working in confidential areas as well, so that was a very important detail for us when we were looking at bringing on another company.
Yes, yeah, that's the point, I was just going to reiterate what was on the report. The company which you selected has the best recommendation, is also the lowest cost, and as you said, is slightly less than the one, the contract that just expired, correct?
Cancelled.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now we'd be seeking board consideration of a motion to authorize the village president to award the janitorial service contract to Imperial Service Systems for an amount not to exceed $1,940 per month for a period of 12 months. So moved?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wachowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
Thank you, that's all we have.
Police Chief's report?
I have no report, thank you.
Attorneys' report?
No report, thank you.
Reminders?
Yes, reminders. October 6th, the Plant Commission, which is tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. October 8th, Historical Preservation Commission meeting has been cancelled. October 12th, Committee of the Whole Workshop, next Monday night at 7:00 PM. October 14th, coffee with the mayor at 9:00 AM. And October the 19th, the next village board meeting at 7:00 PM.
We're seeking motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.